Okay. I guess it's time. Well, it is 7:30. So, call the city council meeting into order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman. Ike Wangeli. Vining.
Here.
Germaney.
Here.
Lomore.
Here.
Felder.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here. I'd ask that we all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have faith and hope in each other and our form of government. We ask for your guidance in the decisions that are made here. We ask you to work for the welfare of this community and all of its residents.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, first item, please.
The first item would be any amendments to the agenda.
Looking to administration or council if there's any items on the agenda that needed to be amended, added, or deleted. I see none. Next item, please.
The next item is citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
At this time, while we have opportunities for comments to the council at the beginning, at the end of the agenda, at this time, if there's any citizens' comments not related to agenda item, just be mindful of the rules of the chambers in your three minutes. I see somebody standing. Please step forward. Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Sam Struth. My address is 3478 South Custer, Monroe. I don't live in the city, but I'm here representing Flags Over Veterans. And what we would like to accomplish is, at Veterans Park, at the War Memorial, there are presently five flag poles, with one being in the center, the American flag, and then, on December 7th, we installed a flag for each main branch of the services. We need two more poles there, and one for the Coast Guard and one for the POW, MIAs. With Flags Over Veterans, we do have some money left over from the project that we handled over the summer. And we were hoping that, since that is a city park, that possibly we could partner with the city to get these two more poles placed there so that we can finish the honoring of the services. And if possible, we'd like to do it by Memorial Day, but, because then we could have another celebration at that time. So, any questions?
I see Mr. Pastu, and I know the city administration will follow up, make sure we have a contact, a number to start that. There's probably just an internal process, which won't be time-consuming, I guarantee. But I know that because we've had some preliminary discussion already, I know that I received a couple of phone calls as we got the flags at the existing poles placed for the service flags. And then, looking at the configuration and design, how that would be, I know that there is some in Veterans Park. I'd have to go back and look at the POW flag, but we want to see how, we'll probably meet at the site and look at Mr. Pastu. So, maybe we'll just start there. Get a name, number, contact, your name or contact number, and then have an opportunity with staff to go out and kind of look at that and how that could be changed. I know the center flag at the War Memorial is higher in the center because it's the American flag.
Right.
And how do we, how do we work with that to reconfigure it and stuff? And we'll see.
What you have right now is like a semicircle.
Yeah.
And what I, from being out there and looking, if we could bring the other two poles up to the corner, it would make it look more like a horseshoe.
Right.
And the other, you know, it's like stepped down on the height of the poles.
Which is the design of the monument as it is, it has that curved design.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Pastu, make sure we get, make contact, and we'll, something we can meet on quickly to see what it takes to get that done.
You want me to step forward and give you an email address?
Yes, if you could.
That would be great. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Thanks, Brian.
Other comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? Yes, ma'am? Yes?
Good evening, Your Honor. Members of council, appreciate the opportunity to come before you. I wonder if in the future, if it would be possible to consider having lawn pickup to continue longer than it does. Many of us have very large trees, and if you drive around town, you see all these bags sitting there kind of like this that are wet. What do you do with them? If you try to compost in your backyard, pretty soon you have a pile taller than you are, and it attracts varmints you'd rather not, and you could have spontaneous combustion from it. If you store it in your garage, then you get a mold and mildew problem. We're a tree city. What do you do with it? And then also, be sure you watch road shows, the showing tonight. Some of us were at the road show. We'll have to go see if we're on it. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? Seeing none. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is public hearing. Item 2285, public hearing to receive and review comments on proposed ordinance 19-001 and ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, Article 5, Citizen Planning Commission, composition. And there are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing regarding item 2285, which is proposed ordinance 19-001 related to the Citizens Planning Commission composition. Any comments for the public hearing at this time? Yes, please stand forward. Name and address, please.
Hi, Steve Swartz, 923 Winston Drive. I'm the chairman of the Citizens Planning Commission. Hi, welcome, mayor and current commission. I'm just here today just to, before you make your final decision, I heard about this going through, that some of the changes, some I think are positive, and some are a little concerning to me after being on this board for a little while. Going from nine to seven, I understand the difficulty sometimes on filling these seats, but at the same time, I think it gives you a good representation as a whole as a city versus having a limited amount of people. Seven is still, makes it easier, but even so, the low, you know, if you get down to five, then what, you know, how many times do we keep cutting this down? Currently, we have six people on the board. Two, I see where you're going to have each person represent a district, which, which is great. I think each person should have a district represented. We currently have two people that are doubled up on this. I don't know how this affects the board that I oversee right now, if it's immediate or if it's until you put somebody up there to be voted on by city council. If it's immediate, I'll be down to four people, because two are doubled up and two would have to leave immediately. I have right now a pretty good board. Almost everybody has rarely missed a meeting in a long time. The people that I, we have on there are dedicated to it and are, we work well together, so it's, it's been a positive. I think another positive is trying to get the planning commission to have a training. We push for that. I know myself and Ken Miller, we've done the Michigan State education, which is good. I think you need to continue that. Either be someone come in before a meeting one day, you know, once a quarter, once a year, whatever that might be. I think you need to continue that. The term limits are interesting. I know it takes a while to learn this position on the planning commission. I know you're doing two, three-year terms. That's six years on there. I've been on this for quite a few years, and it's, and it's still a learning process, and it's still always something new to learn, even after six years of being on this board. Currently, as chairman, I've been one, and each time you sit in that seat, from out in the audience to as a member of the board to chairman, the view becomes radically different, and how you, you see, how you look through the glasses, you know. So, it's all a learning curve that takes a lot of time to become an effective planning commission, committee, committee person. So, but, before you make your final, again, I think seriously look at the nine. I know we, maybe we need to make a better effort on drawing in people that are qualified or people that are interested in learning this position. Maybe there needs to be a harder effort from the committees, the CPC's board point of view, from the city council point of view, to draw people, and I have a hard time believing there aren't more people that are willing to come out and serve the community. So, based on that, you know, if we can keep it at nine, that'd be wonderful, but let's make an effort and see what we can do to bring in a full round, round committee for the, from the city to oversee the projects that we're trying to do here. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Steve, this public hearing still is open. Other comments from those present here this evening regarding proposed ordinance 19-001? Any further comments? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. I'll make some comments, maybe I'll wait until it comes to council action about this, and just to address a couple of items that were there about the membership and how many there are and what the vacancies currently are in the makeup of the board, which I'll address during the council action. Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is 2274, public hearing to receive and review comments on proposed ordinance 19-002 and ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees of the City Code to add Article 11 by establishing the River Rays and Heritage Corridor Advisory Commission. There are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Thank you. I was writing a note. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on item 2274, proposed ordinance number 19-002 and the River Rays and Heritage Corridor Advisory Commission. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding this proposed ordinance? Any comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action, item 2263, proposed ordinance 19-001, up for its final reading.
Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Pastu, if there's any comments that you have. If not, we will just, okay. So, while it's up for its final reading and the council action, so we want to bring it to the table for discussion at least, and then we can see if there's other comments from the council. Councilman Lomore?
Yeah, I, I think it's something we need to reevaluate, for sure, based on the current situation that we have with the Citizens Planning Commission. As Chairman Swartz said, we currently have five members or six members, I'm not sure which it is, two of which, if I'm understanding this correctly, if this ordinance went to effect, would have to leave immediately from the CPC. So, that would leave you with four commissioners on the CPC, thus, I don't know where you're going to, you know, get your quorum very easily with that. There's no, there's no room for error on that. In other words, you have four people out of seven that make the quorum, but if you have one of those members absent, sick, whatever, you lose your quorum. And state dictates that we need to have a CPC, and the only way you're going to have a CPC is to have meetings.
So, I'll start, just to clarify that. There's currently nine members that have seats within the planning commission, and it allows for up to two, but no more than for one precinct. So, we currently have precinct one and precinct five that both have two members on that. And by this proposed ordinance, there'd be only one that'd be permissible. There's currently two vacancies on the planning commission, one out of the fourth precinct. The, the planning commission member, a couple of months ago, resigned. There's some conflicts, and that because of desire or interest with the city. The others, the sixth precinct, and the member that was there, asked not to be reappointed, was willing to serve until a repoint was made, however. That didn't come to be, and obviously, because was not, chose not to attend. On tonight's agenda is a recommendation to council for an appointment to the sixth precinct. So, if you add that to the numbers, if that passes this evening, there'd be five members plus the vacancy of the fourth precinct, which needs to be addressed yet. And by this ordinance, it does have a position for the seventh. And the, and the way the ordinance is written, as is proposed to change, is that seventh position would come from one of the existing, or the recommendation is that it, that we strive to have that seventh person come from one of the existing boards and commissions, whether it be Historic District Commission, DEA, Port Commission, variety, and have that as a kind of a rotation as it goes through. So, those, so there is, if the recommendation I've made to, for the person to represent the sixth precinct this evening, we would have that member filled. This, as I read through this proposed ordinance, takes effect on February 1st, 2019. That would not change the makeup of the commission, and it gives the opportunity over the next two weeks or so to find a person that would come from this, one of our boards and commissions that would then make it to the sixth. As far as asking people and finding people, it is challenging at times, and I, I would think that we might have some more interest. But the reality is, I've asked just about every opportunity I have of people to have the opportunity to serve on a board and commission. It's a simple application. There's many boards and commissions that have needs and have transitions. One comment I will make, as I read through the ordinance, I didn't, unfortunately, have a chance to clarify beforehand. On the fact sheet, it talks about establishing term limits of serving no more than two consecutive three-year terms. When I look on, on the proposed ordinance, I think it's line 76, it says, "Members shall serve no more than three consecutive terms." So, I want to, we need to clarify that, which, which one it is, is it, because as the proposed ordinance reads, it says three terms. The fact sheet says two consecutive, so I'll have to think back. I'm trying to think back at our discussions as a council during work sessions, what was kind of where we were going. So, that'll be needed, a clarification before we consider a final vote, make sure it reads correct. So, I just want to give a background as far as that, as far as the makeup. I, I clearly should be concerned if we only had four members, but I don't think that's going to be the case. Plus, this continues as is until the 1st of February, and the opportunity to still exist to make a request for those that live in the fourth precinct to, that may have an interest to come to the city hall or call my office, and I can walk them through the process of an application, but also the importance and the role of a board and commission, especially in this case, the Citizens Planning Commission. So, that's just my foundational comments at this point. I, and I guess I'll make another comment is, you know, a variety of boards and commissions we've looked at as far as reduction in the numbers, and part of that is, is because it is becoming challenged to find those willing to serve. Unfortunately, that's the reality. Our traffic committee used to have nine people on it, and it's down to five. And we've not had a meeting that didn't have a full five members. The zoning board of appeal was at seven members, and it's currently at five members. And I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Greenhalgh from the building department. He said, since they've done that, they've had a complete meeting of five members and have not had a shortfall. There's a difference with that, but that's not what this agenda item is. But I'm using it as an example of where we've gone through some boards and commission, and are looking at those and how we make sure we have representation. And I think this does give representation from every precinct, which I think is, is important, and we should retain. And we also, an opportunity to where we find that seventh person. And it says, if we don't find it from the board and commission, as this is written, that we can, I could make a recommendation to council for approval as a person at large, which could be anybody in any precinct. So, that's my review. I don't know if other comments from council, and then I'll, we'll get back to Mr. Pastu regarding the term limits if it comes up. Other comments?
Your Honor, for purposes of discussion, I'll make a motion that we put ordinance 19-001 to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, Article 5, Citizen Planning Commission, up for its third reading. Third and final reading.
Second?
There's a motion by Councilman Eklanji, supported by Councilman Felder, that item 2263 be placed on the floor for its final reading.
Your, we have discussion now on the ordinance?
Yeah, we can. I want to, Mr. Pastu has got a point there.
Just a clarification. The fact sheet with this report did say two, and yet the ordinance is very clear as three consecutive terms. So, we'll stand corrected on that.
And Mr. Buzz may have a comment, because we want to make sure that we know that, that what, this is a critical point, which was on the fact sheet.
Your Honor, I think as far as background, my recollection of the discussion was that we had talked about the possibility of two plus an unexpired term. We instead just said three terms, including if it included an unexpired term. So, I think that's the reason why it ultimately came out at three.
So, no more than three. So, that is correct, and the fact sheet is not pertinent then, because we're really voting on what the proposed ordinance is. Make sure clerk, council is clear on that as we move forward. It is three. Now, Councilman Eklanji?
Yeah, Your Honor, I had sent over a note to, I believe, yourself, Matt, and Vince regarding the, the training paragraph. And my, my suggestion is, it says, "City staff will provide appropriate training." I'd like to clarify and just say, "City shall provide appropriate training opportunities for new and existing members of the planning commission through the Michigan Association of Planning, Michigan State Extension, or the Michigan Municipal League." Because all three of them provide training for planning commissions. That's, that was my, my, my suggestion relative to the training. I agree with the chairman of the planning commission that we need to, we need to bolster the, the training of the CPC.
So, if that, if I look at the draft, or the proposed ordinance, it's under item, well, I'll just say line.
Line 108.
108. Which, 2220, section D, your suggestion is that the, the term "staff" be removed.
Correct.
And simply, "The city shall provide appropriate training opportunities" through the Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Association of Planning, and/or MSU Extension.
Correct.
I'm looking at the council, because I don't have a copy of that for them, to make sure they understand what that means. I think what you're looking for is that the recognized organizations that provide this training, and we use that as kind of the foundation.
Correct.
But it could be staff training.
Could be.
At, at a session that may not have an agenda, but they're meeting, it could be an internal training as well. But you're looking for those items coming from them as well. Mr. Pastu?
I, you know, certainly, you know, support, since those are the three primary organizations providing training to planning commissions around the state, there may be some other alternatives in the future, but I think this provides a pretty strong foundation or successor organization. And it doesn't, again, doesn't prohibit us from bringing in our own training or maybe some specialized projects or, or issues that may come before the Citizens Planning Commission. So, from a staff standpoint, we're fine with the proposed recommendation.
Other comments or question from council? Mr. Buzz?
Your Honor, if I may, the only other thing that I might suggest we consider is, in addition to those three organizations, put an additional phrase which would say, "or other similar organizations", just for the possibility that we want this ordinance, obviously, will be in effect for a long period of time. Should one of those organizations change names, stop doing these sort of things, and there be a successor. Obviously, I think listing those three, they are the three preeminent at this point in time.
I don't have a problem with that. Okay. Good suggestion. I'm sure council understands that. I'm seeing that they do. I guess the last, I'll just make a final comment, because it came up in the public hearing about the composition. And yes, it does change. It does eliminate, if this passes, the duplication of a precinct having a represent, representative. That's not what tonight's decision is. Tonight's decision is about, should it, should we change this structure and composition of the planning commission? Obviously, over the next two-plus weeks, that will be my challenge, coming back to the council, whether there's recommendations for appointment, or whether there's not, or how we make that work. And, well, the council will weigh in on those comments as I, if this passes. So, I'm just kind of letting know where it goes. It doesn't, I, I don't know who that is. And then, you know, I'll look at to see, not only, as we've talked about before, the value of the persons that have currently serving and continue to serve, obviously, the tenure of their service and trying to meet this ordinance as well. Also, looking at those that are in, in terms that are continuing or, or not. There's a lot to consider, and I've had conversations with some regarding it, staff and other people on, on boards. So, just make that comment. So, there is a motion and a second, that's proposed ordinance 2263 be placed on the floor for its final reading. Mr. Buzz, you have another comment?
Your Honor, I would just suggest, because of our ordinance that deals with the passage of ordinances, that if there's a proposed amendment that is going to be made for the language that Councilman Eklanji suggested, that that amendment occur prior to the final reading of the ordinance, so that that amendment gets reflected, if that's the rule of council.
So, would that come before the, or after the, the vote, just to bring it forward?
Under the ordinance, the amendment needs to come before the final reading.
Okay.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we amend, let me go back to the ordinance itself. Hold on a second. That we amend section 22-20, item D, to read, "City shall provide appropriate training opportunities through the Michigan Municipal League, Michigan Association of Planning, Michigan State University Extension, and other organizations for new and existing members of the Citizen Planning Commission regarding planning, zoning, and economic development." Economic development, parliamentary procedure, and other topics deemed applicable.
I had a brief copy of that that I'm passing along, so, and I'll get it down to Mr. Buzz, of course, the clerk treasurer, make sure she has that. But it adds the comment which was from Mr. Buzz about "and other similar organizations." I'm just giving a second so it can be reviewed. Mr. Buzz?
I'm comfortable with that, Your Honor.
I have to apologize for my writing across that, because I was taking notes, just so, there's some things in scribbles and circles.
Your Honor, I'm comfortable with the form.
And it has to be, that addition was made about "and other organizations that you suggested," which isn't on there, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion.
Second?
There's a motion by Councilman Eklanji, supported by Councilman Felder, on item 2263, proposed ordinance 19-001, be brought to the floor for its final reading, as has been proposed for amended.
So, we're, we're voting on the amendment right now, right? Not bringing it to the floor?
Correct.
Because they'll be too separate?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Because we have the other one still pending.
Okay.
As, for the amendment.
For the amendment.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman? Ike Wangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaney?
Yes.
Lomore?
No.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. So, we still have the pending motion that's there about to, for the final reading, and now it's as amended, correct? Correct. Mr. Buzz, do we need to revise that?
Your Honor, I think as long as Councilman Eklanji is saying that his motion is to bring it for its final reading as just amended in the prior motion, I think that that would be appropriate.
I'm going to look to Mr. Councilman Felder, I'm sorry, for who made the second.
My second.
Very well. There is a motion, a second, on 2263, proposed ordinance 19-001, that be placed on the floor for its final reading. Other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Wangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaney?
Yes.
Lomore?
No.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 19-001, Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, Article 5, Planning Commission, and ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, Article 5, Planning Commission of the Code of the City of Monroe, the City of Monroe ordained.
This ordinance pass. Clerk, please call the roll.
Person Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Wangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaney?
Yes.
Lomore?
No.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
So, the next item is item 2257, proposed ordinance 19-002, and ordinance to establish the River Rays and Heritage Corridor Advisory Commission, up for its final reading.
I'll, Mr. Pastu, if there's any comments, if not?
I have nothing yet, Your Honor.
Up to the, to the floor for the council.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we put ordinance 19-002, an ordinance to establish the River Rays and Heritage Corridor Advisory Commission. The table for its third and final reading.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Councilman Eklanji, supported by Councilwoman Germaney, on item 2257, proposed ordinance 19-002, be placed on the floor for its final reading. Let's see if there's any comments. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Wangeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaney?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Ordinance 19-002, Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, Article, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, to Add Article 11, River Rays and Heritage Corridor Advisory Commission of the Code of the City of Monroe, the City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Whitman? Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Item, please.
The next item is Item 2286, Consideration to Approve Public Safety Assessment.
Mr. Pastu.
Your honor, city administration is recommending city council approve a agreement with Fitch and Associates to conduct the public safety assessment at our last meeting in December there. Mr. Fuentes with Fitch and Associates spoke with the city council going through the the structure of how the process would involve both police, fire, but as well as city council in the importance of council participating in that. And so at this point, as we've completed the process for the selection, we're recommending to go forward with Fitch and Associates to initiate this public safety assessment.
Thank you. Any questions for administration? Seeing none, motion would be in order.
Your honor.
Lomore?
We approve professional service proposal from Fitch and Associates to conduct a public safety assessment in the amount of $94,100. Incumbre an additional 10% for project contingencies, and authorize the city manager to sign the necessary documents to initiate the project.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Lomore, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on Item 2286, the approval of the public safety assessment. Other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman? Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
The next item is Item 2273, Consideration to Approve Amendments to City Manager's Employment Agreement.
Mr. Pastu, if you would start, and I may have some comments.
Okay, your honor, you have before you a employment agreement with myself. Much of what we talked about during my evaluation back in early December, some of the things that we talked about are included in there. The highlights are noted in the fact sheet.
Thank you. Just make a quick comment. As we discussed and had, council gave direction to the administration, but also myself. We had, did have contact with Director Human Resources, as well as our labor attorney, and in discussion with Mr. Pastu on this agreement that's before us. There were some, as the fact sheet shows, a couple of adjustments. I know that it was sent out for opportunity for review ahead of time. And I do support this. I know there's just maybe some conversation move forward to get it on the floor and see if there's discussion. This time, I guess if you have discussion, you can do it now, or make a motion and put it on the floor. Councilman Lomore?
Your honor, there were some of my, some of the constituents that were asking some questions regarding this. They, they have seen the, was put on the website as far as what was, the amendments were. There were some questions regarding the residency and some other things. And I just wanted to be very transparent as to why we want to allow these things and why they are necessary. Because I believe that our city manager has done an excellent job here in the city of Monroe and that sometimes these things need to be done in order to satisfy what we need to basically get out of him and also to help him do his job here. So that was one of the things I wanted to clarify as far as the residency requirement that is written on there, which I believe clearly states that we want our city manager to live in the city of Monroe. However, in this case, we see it as a good fit for the city of Monroe, that he is where he's at and that he maintain where he's at and for our good and for his good as well.
I'll make a comment, see if, oh, Councilman, if you want to go first, go ahead.
No, please.
So we had conversation about this and, and obviously the residency is, when Mr. Pastu first came to the city, was within his previous contract, which actually the term is used in kind of evergreen. I mean, it's not, doesn't have a conclusion. This, this term, I'll start by saying it does have a two-year agreement. Obviously, there's things that could be decided at the end of the two years, whether it's a conclusion or opportunity to extend. At the same token, I look at Mr. Pastu, since he's come to the city and been involved. And one of the items, when you talk about being within the city is, is what do you do if you're a resident? You could do nothing, or that's not the intent, is being active and involved and being available. I can say in, in this tenure since Mr. Pastu has been here, he's went through the Leadership Monroe Program. He's active with the chamber and also probably the closest we've had as far as a relationship and activity with the county. He's active with the community. I can't think of a person that hasn't reached out to him that he has not been available for. We've had some critical incidents that I know that at times he's here, he's here before anybody else, and many times he's here after everybody. So I don't know that, and I think it's kind of what Councilman Lomore is kind of making a statement to, is what his, his role has been and how he has been available met what were why some of those reasons when you talk about an agreement and residency. I'm comfortable with the way it's written and knowing that also his, knowing the, not just the council, but also staff that's very actively involved in the community and also listening to what residents may have. I cannot think of a person that hasn't had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Pastu, whether it be early, late, or even weekends he's been here. So I, this is not a concern to me at this point, and just kind of my view. I'm satisfied, as I think council has been as well as we've gone forward, so.
If I may elaborate on that as well as, the reason for the residency requirement to begin with was to have eyes on, hands on, city of Monroe. And I think that our city manager, I know that he's, he's done a great job being here, seeing everything that's going on. He's always available to any city resident. I know that for a fact. I've seen him lend an ear when needed. He listens to the residents, and that's more or less what we have expected out of that residency requirement, is that he's a part of the community. And I think that, that he's, he's shown that and exhibited that. So I appreciate that from him.
Councilman Felder?
I move that we adopt the amendments to the city manager's employment contract renewal.
I'll support it.
There's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Ike Angeli on Item 2273, approved amendments to the city manager's employment agreement. Yes, Councilman Ike Angeli.
One comment, primarily for the benefit of the community that may be watching, is that it wasn't at the city council's directive to change the agreement to extend it through January 31st of 2021. It was at the request of the city manager to put that, that date in, to give him the opportunity if he wanted to continue or retire. So I don't want the community to construe this, is that we're putting a termination date on the city manager's contract. This is at the request of the city manager, not the city council.
Very good point. Thank you, councilman. Other final comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine? Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Item, please.
Next item is Item 2270, Port of Monroe Authorization of Land Sale to Shun Lee Steel USA, Inc.
Mr. Pastu, and then if you have somebody else might be speaking, I'm not sure.
Thank you, your honor. The next two items involve resolutions requesting city council approval for the sale of property with the Port of Monroe. I think Mr. Cochran, if you would come to the podium, I think we're going to provide for council as well as the public an area where this first, where both properties are at so that you have a sense of which properties are being proposed for, for sale.
Honorable mayor, council, Mark Cochran, Assistant City Manager and Economic Development Coordinator. As Mr. Pastu mentioned, we've got two items on the council's agenda tonight regarding sale for new development at the Port of Monroe. The first being 16-acre parcel that's just west of the I-75 Front Street Interchange between the interchange and Hanwha on Front Street. See if we can get it pulled up. But for some background information, last year, our partner at the Monroe County Business Development Corporation, Tim Lake, was approached by the Detroit Regional Chamber about a client who is looking to locate new manufacturing operations somewhere in southeast Michigan, given the fact that we've got access to the Port of Monroe, access to Lake Erie, rail, and interstate. There we go, there's a parcel in question. It was desirable for the client to locate in Monroe at the port. And so we went through about a period of a year related to negotiations and looking at some different sites in the port. Ultimately, we settled on the 16-acre parcel that you see before you. Shun Lee Steel is a Chinese sheet pile manufacturer looking to locate at the port due to the transportational logistic benefit that offers, that the port offers. The benefit to the community per, in agreement with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation is about $110 million, or $60 million investment with 110 new jobs in the community over the next three years. Just a heads up, part of the, the package that was offered does include an industrial tax, industrial facilities tax exemption that will be coming before the city council in the future for approval and consideration. But the port did agree at its December meeting to approve the sale of the property to Shun Lee Steel USA, pending city council's approval for $225,000.
That's the item proposed before council. I don't know if there's a question for Mr. Cochran. Councilman Ike Angeli?
Thank you, your honor. Mr. Cochran, not an issue with the request. I guess I just, this is an exploratory question. Because of the use of state economic development incentives and because the city may be asked to do a industrial PA 198, Shun Lee is aware that we have a living wage ordinance, and people that work in that facility have to pay a living wage?
Yep, that was part of the agreement.
They are aware of it, okay. Your honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the, accept the, or approve the authorization of the Port of Monroe to go ahead with the land sale to Shun Lee Steel USA, Inc.
Motion by Councilman Ike Angeli, supported by Councilman Lomore on Item 2270, Port of Monroe Authorization, Land Sale to Shun Lee Steel USA, Inc. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is Item Number 2271, Authorization of Port of Monroe Land Sale to Vent Tower Industries.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
Your honor, I'll have Mr. Cochran go through this as well.
The next piece of property is about a 25-acre parcel that Vent Tower, their legal name being Great Lakes Towers, currently holds a lease with an option to purchase. Vent Tower has approached the port as well as the city with the desire to execute that option to purchase. We've had several meetings with Vent Tower. Their, their plans for this property include their expanded manufacturing opportunities. Not only are they producing still the towers that the wind turbines sit on, but they've also expanded into producing pressurized tanks as well as looking into starting to manufacture and install solar arrays. And so they'll be using this property as part of the, the expansion and diversification of their manufacturing production in the future. The outline of the property that you see before you is the parcel line, although the actual land that transfers may vary a little bit related to some of the property lines, the access and the easements that the port would like to maintain when it comes to the rail lines and some of the other infrastructure that's at the port. But give or take, it's about 25 acres that Vent Tower is seeking to purchase.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Cochran? Yes, Councilman Ike Angeli.
Thank you, your honor. Mr. Cochran, should have asked this with the Shun Lee acquisition too, but I'm assuming that both of these land acquisitions take into account proposed improvements to the, the Front Street Interchange with MDOT.
Yep, Vent Tower has been involved in the discussions that we've been having with MDOT and has seen the potential design and construction related to the other parcel purchase with Shun Lee. We may have to modify some of the design somewhat to accommodate that development. But again, that was just in post-conceptual stage, and we can work around that.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Port of Monroe land sale to Vent Tower Industries.
Second? This is motion by Councilman Ike Angeli, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on Item 2271, Authorization, Port of Monroe Land Sale to Vent Tower Industries. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cochran.
You're welcome.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And under Item B, Approval of Payments to Vendors, the amount should read $620,105.24. 620105.24.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Is on a consent agenda, council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? They continue to look as well. Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any further items from those present? Seeing none, council, any other further items to be pulled for further discussion? In order.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we carry out all the items in the consent agenda except for Item Number 2281, and carry out, carry them out for approval.
Support? Motion by Councilman Lomore, supported by Councilman Felder, that all items on the consent agenda, except Item 2281, be accepted. Recommendations carried out, resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Ike Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lomore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is Item 2281, Consideration to Appoint City Manager to the ALCC Board and Authorize Third Quarter Appropriation.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining?
Yes, first I want to apologize to the council and to the community at large for not being available for this conversation on December 17th. I just wanted to, there were a couple of things when I watched the meeting back that were stated. One concerns the ALCC bylaws. I just wanted to clarify that those were completed, updated, and turned into the city, to my knowledge, back in August of, actually, August 29th of 2017. And then there were some additional amendments made on October 28th. So I don't know how that mix-up came to be, but if you don't have those, Vince or anybody here, I did bring a copy to share with the council. I'm not sure why that information was put out, that we hadn't completed the bylaws. So I just wanted to clear that up. Also, I wanted to state that, I'm speaking for the ALCC board, that we're excited to have Vince join us. I know there were some questions about my position as liaison and being on the city council. Historically, the third precinct representative has been on the council. Our last two councilpersons who sat in this seat were actually the chairman of the ALCC board. So historically, that, that's just been how it's done. I don't know when that started, but as long as I can remember. Currently, I do serve as the vice chair. So I know there were some issues about conflict of interest. We haven't had the opportunity to discuss that as ALCC board, just because it's, it's always been that the third precinct representatives served on the board. But we are very happy to have Vince join us if the... But we are very happy to have Vince join us if the council will allow for that. And I just wanted to say that there has been some, it's been quite a process in getting through this transition. And I wanted the council to be aware that we are still in the midst of the transition and hiring the new executive director. When we made that change, I did state to Vince, the city manager, that I saw it as maybe a year-long process to get to where the city expected us to be. I just wanted to remind the council that we are still within that year. And not that it was said that the city was going to allow us a year, but I just want you all to understand and take into consideration that some of the positions that were phased out at the ALCC have been held for almost forty years, decades by the same individuals. So now we have new individuals on the staff as far as the administrative part. So it's gonna take time for us to get to where we want to be, but we are following our, our strategic plan. We had the board training, which was very beneficial in helping to more strongly define the role of the board and the role of the staff and how we work together. I see that happening, but I felt I should state that we are still in the midst of that transition. And yeah, I just, I just wanted to state that because I wasn't at the last board meeting. Also, if, if the council feels that there is a conflict, our bylaws do state that there's room for two appointments from the city, a liaison and then an alternative, an alternate, I apologize. And so I don't know yet how the ALCC board wants to set that up, but our bylaws do call for, allow for two appointments from the city. So if Vince and I both served on the board, that would not be outside of our bylaws. But, but whatever the council feels, as far as the conflict of interest, you know, I'll accept that. I've been working in the community twenty years doing programs, programming and different things at the ALCC. So whether I'm on the board or not, I'm still a part of the community and I'll still serve to help the ALCC. So I just wanted the council to know it's not an issue for me at all. I welcome Vince and his leadership abilities and I hope that if, if we vote to place him on the board tonight, that, that'll help us as the ALCC board get to our goals even faster. So I don't have a conflict with it. I'm in full support of it. And speaking for the rest of the ALCC board, we are excited, you can say, to have Vince join us. So yeah, I just wanted to put that out there.
Maybe, and Council Mike Lengly may have a comment. So I'm gonna go back to the, the appointments and the board and think back. And as I, as I think about council's action, the councilperson has been appointed by this body as a liaison to the ALCC board.
Correct.
The council doesn't and hasn't appointed somebody to the ALCC board. That's not within the council's position. Trying to think of, well, Councilman Lemore is a liaison to the Port of Monroe board, but he doesn't sit and vote at the Port of Monroe. He's there as a message. I'm trying to think of other board commissions. We have the same thing, some are liaisons and some are voting members. I have a seat that sits on the Brownfield redevelopment, but by the, the city, it is a voting position versus a liaison. So that's the first part. So if the ALCC in the past has, has voted to include the council member on there, it's not from the action of the city. So tonight's item is about the city manager, but I appreciate the comments because it might be something that maybe with the city manager and the city attorney that we review what that is and from that standpoint, if there's something that may be potentially of a conflict, because we're making decisions as a council and giving revenue and items to the ALCC board, and the ALCC board is then making decisions how to spend that. And I'll leave that to the attorney and that to look into, whether that, that could be perceived as potentially as a conflict or not. Or putting any council member to, in that position, they have to do two decision-making roles as a council member and also as a board member that might be that in this circumstance with the ALCC. So I don't have a, the, I had a copy, it's in my office, I think it's the same one. The city administration is the one that appoints to the board. And it says here, and this is what this says, is two of the members of the board shall be appointed, one from the city of Monroe and one from the county of Monroe, but it's not the city council. It's from the city. I know, I think back years when Mr. Reddy was the city attorney here, and he actually, I think, was, might have been the position that the city administration had appointed, but it's not the city council that makes that. And it says alternates may be appointed by the city and the county. So I just, so I, what I wanted to just kind of clarify where, where those actions come from and what our role is as a council in relation to the ALCC, and that's appointing a liaison. The city, that's what Mr. Pastu was, and this appointment is asking the city board and commissions of his, I'm sorry, his appointment from the ALCC, or his appointment as a city representative to the ALCC board. It's not coming through the mayor to the council. So I just want to make that clarification as well. Council Mike Lengly, I don't know if you had a comment or?
Yeah, Your Honor, my comment that I made at the last meeting about the Kelly's position on the board of ALCC was one more of transparency that, you know, I keep mentioning this to the community, that the community keeps, we have to make the differentiation that the city owns the property and the building. We contract with the ALCC board, which is a nonprofit, as a vendor to run programs in the building. So then we have a situation where we have a city councilperson now that obviously sits on city council, but then is also on the board of the nonprofit that we are giving allocation and money to. So for Councilman Vining's position, I wanted to make sure that the attorney reviewed that to see if there was an inherent conflict of interest, primarily to protect the councilperson from that kind of decision-making. That if there is a conflict, then it's got to be addressed. If there isn't a conflict, then it's transparent and we, we know how to address those issues. But we, we have a distinct where the city is providing a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the ALCC nonprofit as a vendor to run programming. And that board also happens to have a city councilperson on it, who also makes decisions on the appropriation of the money. So I just wanted it, I wanted the attorney at some point to weigh in on that, because I know that there are other, as the mayor had indicated, he sits on the Brownfield board, which also the city has to review and approve their budget. But the Brownfield board, the mayor, also sits on the downtown development authority, which we have to approve their budget. But those are done by state statute. They require that the chief elected official serve on those committees. So that's done by state statute. So I just want to be, you know, above board on all this. So that was the reason for the request.
Good, I'll come back to.
I'd be interested to know even where it started, because all my life, someone from the city has been a voting member of the ALCC, it's never come into question. Although I personally have felt that conflict at times of serving that dual role. While you're looking, Matt, I'd be curious if you could find, you know, where did that begin?
Mr. Budz.
Your Honor, so that's a step that I'll undertake. I think it's probably important to look at, I think, part of a distinction is being liaison or being a voting member on the board in the history of the bylaws. I will undertake that analysis.
And, and Your Honor, our liaisons vote. Every, everyone on the ALCC board votes, even the appointees. And that has always been that way, so I don't know.
Your Honor, but I think, I think the issue here is, is that may have been past practice, but now that the city has worked with the ALCC nonprofit to reorganize the board, have bylaws, kind of manage their affairs like a, like a true nonprofit, that's where these issues now come up in terms of clarity. And that's why we have to have this, this clarity relative to that, that dual appointment in terms of being on the board of the nonprofit as well as on the council. It may have happened in the past, but I think because the council has been more involved in making sure that the nonprofit is operating correctly, that's where all this has come up at. So it's, it's, it's part of the housekeeping, is the way I look at it, process.
As we started this conversation, I did go back and look at past appointments and, and terminology, because I think it is important to recognize. And as I went back and looked at the previous, at least councils I've been involved with in making recommendations on appointment to the ALCC, it's always been as a liaison. And it's the, the board itself that I think has made the liaison into a board member. And I think it's, as John, Councilman Colange just said, you know, it's a discussion of what, where we're at and what we should be doing now. But I appreciate Mr. Budz is gonna look back and see, find out if there's other information we should be looking at as well. Councilman Lemore.
Like Councilman Ike Lengly was saying, we, we don't dictate what their board suggests, that the liaison, how they react and what they do within their board. We simply have her there as an ear for the city council. So it is a good thought to protect her and, and make sure that the right things are being done. And like Councilman Ike Lengly said, just do some house cleaning in this, just to make sure that we're, everything's on the up and up and that we're very transparent. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, the city council appoint city manager Vince Pastu as a city of Monroe representative on the ALCC Board of Directors and authorize the disbursement of third quarter appropriation, the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll support.
There are two here, but there's a motion by Councilman Lemore, I'll say, supported by Councilman Vining on item two-twenty-two eighty-one, the appointment of city manager to the ALCC board, Authorization of Third Quarter Appropriations. Council Mike Lengly, I think you have another comment?
Your Honor, I think just for the purpose of clarity and maybe transparency at this point, until we get a legal opinion, I would ask Councilman Vining to abstain from voting on this issue.
Well, she can make the motion, I'm not sure.
She can make the motion, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure. Well, I'm looking at Mr. Budz to see if there's any, any concern.
Your Honor, in this case, I guess I would leave that up to Councilman Vining. In this case, I could see the possibility. What I don't know right now is, is she serving in a liaison capacity? Is she serving as a voting board member? And it looks like those issues may be a bit clouded as it stands right now. Certainly, a safe thing to do would be to abstain if, if she's willing to do that. But I also, if she is merely at this point serving as the present sitting liaison to the ALCC board without a vote, then I don't see an issue there, but we really don't have clarity on the issue at this point as we sit here today. One other thing that I guess I would ask for consideration for is, as the motion is presently worded in twenty-two eighty-one, it says for city manager Vincent Pastu to be the representative on the board. If at this point it's council's desire that he be their liaison but not be a voting member, I would suggest some clarity on that, that it's the city of Monroe's representative to the ALCC board as the liaison, if that's the intention at this point in time.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Pastu a question here, because I'm not sure that's.
If I may, Your Honor, the intent was to be a voting member.
Right. And that's probably where we should have started, make sure that was everybody's understanding. That's how I read it to be, is by the city, the city who can make an appointment there is being brought forward to the council for approval to an appointment as the, well, the bylaws say, but as, as a voting member to the board.
And that is the intent of my motion.
Yeah, and there was a second, Councilman, a second, I think that's what you understood.
Yeah.
I'll start there as the, as Mr. Pastu being the representative as a voting member.
The intent, which would put us in the same, may put us in the same position as far as me being the vice chair and, and serving on the council. But hopefully, we can figure it out, because we do want him to have a vote.
Right, Mr. Pastu, of course, not being an elected member here of council, wouldn't have that conflict. He's there as an administration, so that, that's really part of what we're discussing here and the importance of it is having a council, elected council member as a voter and then voting in, in multiple locations is where the, it starts to have some discussion and Mr. Budz is going to be finalizing. Of course, the question comes up on the votes, so I'll give you your opportunity to make your, your comment.
For the sake of transparency, abstain from tonight's vote until you can give me some more direction on it, Mr. Budz. So I'll abstain, abstain from this vote.
Unless there's something concerned with council of having Councilman abstain, we always make sure that that's least wise. By no means by that action, then I know Councilman Vining doesn't lessen her interest, desire and wanted to see the ALCC move forward as well as supported what this is, but the, from that standpoint, just as you said, I think is at this point where we're at. And we'll see where we're at when we get back from Mr. Budz's comments. So there is a motion and a second, and at this point, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman. Ike Angelie.
Yes.
Vining. Germaine.
Yes.
Lemore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
I have no further items, Your Honor.
It's January, so Councilwoman Whitman, start the year off.
Thing I have to share is that this is the beginning of a new year. And it's very obvious from just being here tonight of all the changes that are going to be coming. And hopefully, they're all for the best. And I was talking to a young girl that has a job downtown and she was talking about, you know, how she wishes that Monroe was with more businesses and shops and busier. And, you know, I think we're headed in the right direction. Some days, I wonder, and, you know, there seems to be, there's always going to be someone that's upset. But hopefully, in the long run, it's for the best of the community. And so I'm looking forward to change. I'm all about change, so. And I hope everyone has a wonderful new year.
Council Mike Lengly.
Your Honor, a brief comment. I wanted to wish the community a happy new year and comments under, with the city manager, when the city manager has some comments on a project, so I'll reserve mine until then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilman Vining.
Your Honor, I just wanted to invite everyone out on January fourteenth at the Monroe County Community College. There's gonna be a lecture given by Dr. Derek Baker King, Barbara King. He is the nephew of Dr. Martin Arthur King Jr. That will be from two to three P.M. at the Lazy Boy Center at the Community College. And that same evening at six P.M., January fourteenth, at the Arthur Leso Community Center, there'll be a panel discussion. The title of the panel is Diversifying the Dream. We're gonna have a lot of local people, including the mayor, Connie Carroll from the United Way, Mark Cochran from the city of Monroe, and others. And, and they'll be discussing Diversifying the Dream. We'll have students who will give short speeches on, on the same topic. So everyone is welcome. Both of the events are free and open to the public. And that's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Germaine.
Happy New Year to everyone, and I want to congratulate the Port of Monroe for their fourth Seaway Pace Setter Award that they've received in the last six years. So four out of six is pretty darn good. So congratulations to Paul Lamore and team.
Very good. Councilman Lamore?
Yeah, I guess, Your Honor, uh, Happy New Year to everybody out there first. Uh, secondly, uh, this is just a small taste of what everybody in the City of Monroe is going to see from the Port of Monroe. Uh, you know, you see the land sale to Shunley, uh, the addition that Vent Tower's putting on. Uh, I can tell you three things that are coming out of this right now. Employment, increased tax base, and a great outlook for the future growth of Monroe. Uh, you know, I know that we're struggling with the DTE situation at this moment. Uh, I, I see this as the savior for us right here. Uh, the Port of Monroe is, is doing an outstanding job. Uh, our director, Paul Lamore, is, is worked beyond his belief to get everything done down there. Uh, Mr. Cochran has done a great job assisting him in some of these things. Uh, I can't be more proud to be a resident of Monroe and, uh, and to say that, uh, our, our port is doing such a fantastic job at this time point. Uh, communities from around the Great Lakes are talking about the Port of Monroe. So if that says anything, uh, we're getting a little bit of world, if not nation, national recognition here in the City of Monroe just because of our port. So kudos to, uh, our port director, Paul Lamore, and, uh, obviously, Mr. Cochran, and, oh, and Mr. Lake as well. Thank you for your help and assisting in all these things, because all this is, is starting to come to fruition and, and, uh, I couldn't be happier with what I'm seeing, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Felder.
Here's my hope and expectation, if the business is going down there, we'll make a big positive impact in the City of Monroe. Um, other than that, Happy New Year to everybody and congratulations to Vince on your contract renewal. We're happy to have you as long as you're happy to tolerate us. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Well, this is a new year, and I think that, uh, what we've heard tonight in, in both the discussions and some of the work session, but also here this evening, uh, in action items that were, uh, taken on by the council show, that shows progress and, and looking forward to this year. Uh, one of the items is the city council is going to meet this Saturday. It's a review of the, uh, city's goals and objectives. We set a two-year goals and objectives, so a year ago is the first thing we did as a new council. Here we are a year later, and not only is it an opportunity to take, uh, a, a collective view, just as somewhat we've heard here, of, oh, what may have been achieved, but also equally, if not more important, is what are we gonna achieve here in two thousand nineteen? So it's an opportunity that the council will have a session on Saturday here at City Hall, nine to noon, and the opportunity to, to really see what is, uh, still on the list that we want to work toward, uh, things that are in progress and things that yet can be done, and how do we prioritize that? So it is an important session. I'm looking forward to having that conversation with the council and the administration as we prioritize and, and move those discussions forward. Uh, on Saturday, the, uh, January nineteenth, is the, uh, the commemoration of the Battle of the River Raisin. Yes, we know that currently there seems to be some sort of a shutdown at the federal level. Uh, that's not going to, um, at least from what today I've heard, uh, stop or, or inhibit the, uh, kind of the commemoration out at the, um, um, I won't say the National Park Center, but, and the property, when, whether it be commemoration activities that are there and flag raising and things along those lines. I know that the River Raisin Battlefield Foundation Board is seeking volunteers to help with that because if the National Park Service are, is not going to be there, if there, if there isn't a shutdown type mode from the federal government, it doesn't mean we can't sit, continue to do the activities that we have planned, uh, and do them on the city property that's there. So if you have an interest to, uh, I hope you come and, uh, participate in, in here. Also, the speaker that'll be at the Monroe County Museum in the afternoon at, uh, two-thirty, but also the opportunity to volunteer and help out and be part of the, part of the community in that sense. Uh, with that, on, uh, as Councilman Vining mentioned about, uh, Dr. Derek King coming, I hope that you put this on your calendar for the opportunity to come and listen and talk about, uh, the, as it, as the topic is at the ALCC, Diversifying the Dream, and how we reflect upon where we are and where we're going, and how we make this, uh, this community better and all encompassing. Uh, and, uh, City Hall will be closed on Monday, January twenty-first. Of course, it's in honor of Martin Luther King and his birthday, but it's not just the day off. It's not just, uh, a commemoration of a person. It's really what he stands for, what we should be standing for, and how we en- embrace each other and share our space together. So we think about that day, don't just look at it as a day off and holidays and the banks are closed, but not really an opportunity to embrace that concept and make some extension within our community and, uh, continue to, uh, meet what that dream was and still is. I want to thank Mr. Lake for being here, the CEO of Business Development Corporation. Uh, I think, uh, as we said, uh, with, uh, Councilman Lamore and Felder said, you know, there's a partnership and of course Mark Cochran and his involvement in our development and the hours he spends also, not only initiatives and support, but initiatives that he's driving here in the city that we'll be hearing about here as well as we start this new year off. So thanks, Tim, for being here and, and the partnership you had, we have between, uh, the BDC and the city. Uh, Port of Monroe, it's been said, great, uh, great stories and great growth, and I think that's, uh, here to continue as well. Uh, earlier in the evening, we had a, um, uh, an item that was a, a public hearing and discussion on boards and commissions. And I'm gonna say it again, because I say it just about every opportunity I have, there's many, many opportunities for the residents of the community of City of Monroe to serve on boards and commissions. And some even, you don't have to be a resident because there's, uh, some latitude. So if you have an interest in, in serving your community, and I always say you do not have to be elected official to serve your community. In fact, the heart and soul of the community is those that are volunteers and those that are willing to serve their time on a board and commission to give back. Because without the residents, then we have this panel here that simply is going to sit up here and will make our decisions without input, and I don't think that's a path that any good community, uh, moves forward on. So I look forward to the opportunity. You can call City Hall, you can call the mayor's office, and, uh, make an inquiry about the various boards and commissions. They're also on our website, as is the, uh, uh, information related to that, and, uh, how to turn an application in. And I'm always, uh, willing and able to talk to those that might have an interest. And before I, um, close, I'm gonna, the clerk treasurer, she has the same desires about volunteerism and in a critical, important time within the, uh, uh, clerk treasurer's office, when you talk about elections and the need for election support and volunteers to come in to do that as well. So with that, um, clerk treasurer Lavoy?
Um, I absolutely echo everything you said, and it really is the heart and soul. And we all have to find our spark and, and, and use our talents and help each other. Um, other than that, I have no further comments.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, City Council, for, uh, support tonight with, uh, the amendment to my employment agreement. Uh, many of you've heard me say, these two and a half years have probably been two of the, two and a half best years I've had professionally. I've thoroughly enjoyed working with the city council and, and got a group of wonderful department heads that I work with and employees and individuals like Mr. Lake, Mr. Basonic with the county. Uh, it's a great community. It's, it's remarkable level of, uh, um, you know, togetherness that you have. Uh, and so I've thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed, uh, you know, working here and certainly appreciate the, uh, the contract approval. Uh, the other thing is, reiterating, uh, what, uh, was discussed earlier about this Saturday, I will send you an update, uh, with the goals and objectives. I think I'd sent that out a couple of months ago. Uh, but also, take a latter look at the citizen survey. I maybe, we may have to, uh, give the, uh, executive summary, if we can get that out there to you, to, to use that as some of the, for some of our discussion, and so. And then lastly, uh, we didn't get a chance to talk about it during the, uh, the work session, but I, uh, did wanna talk a little bit about, uh, uh, the Spire Development. Did we, did you bring something? Okay, yeah, I thought he did. Uh, uh, but as you know, we received, uh, uh, with the Spire Development who had approached us last fall about, uh, a site over, uh, off of, uh, they are now interested in, it's a, it's a forty to fifty unit residential, uh, development. Uh, uh, they are interested in the, um, fire station site plus, uh, the county, uh, parking lot to, to the east of it. And so we wanted to, you know, from our end of it, from city administration, we're supportive of it. We think it's a good project for that area transitioning from, uh, uh, residential area into the downtown. They are looking at some, uh, state, uh, housing tax credits, uh, with that, and so I'll let Mr. Cochran, uh, go a little bit about, I think this is just a project that they had done, uh, I think in Coldwater as an example of what they were looking at. And I know Councilmember Eiko Angelie, uh, wanted to weigh in on that as well.
So, Mark, before we begin, just so, council, uh, obviously aware, this is an item that's a kind of a carryover from a work session. It's not an item that's being put before us for any type of vote.
No action.
It's, or deliberation, just as much as maybe some, uh, comments that you may have regarding this, just as we do in our work sessions, so we're not looking for action from council at this time. Thank you, Mr. Cochran.
Uh, well, as Mr. and this is a development that was brought before us last year. Spire developers out of Columbus, Ohio reached out to me, uh, last year about their interest in possibly looking at a residential development in downtown Monroe. Uh, they are working on a project in Coldwater, Michigan that's similar to what the project in Monroe would be. They were driving through our community, took a shining and liking to it and reached out after doing some research. So, uh, the, the image that you see on the screen, I, I do have to reiterate and caution you that this is purely the concept, uh, of what they are doing in Coldwater. A project in Monroe would look similar to this and match the historic character in our community. Um, but they are proposing a three to four-story residential apartment building in downtown Monroe that would house about forty to fifty rental housing units. That would be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. Um, general occupancy, meaning the, the target, uh, resident would be a young professional, working families and seniors. Uh, they did take a look and we sent them the master plan, uh, and looked at the residential market analysis that the city completed last year. So another example of, of a study that was well worth the money because that really is the basis for why they are constructing this, or proposing to construct this in Monroe, looking at that missing middle, uh, housing group that we're missing in Monroe, and this is an opportunity to possibly satisfy and fulfill that need. So as Mr. Pastu mentioned, they are looking, uh, at the LI-TEC program through, uh, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Uh, last year when they approached us, they were looking at, uh, there's two application rounds that the state has, one, uh, in the end of the year and one in April. Uh, previously, when they were looking, uh, with the requirements that are needed for a project like this, there was just not enough time to work through all the requirements. And so they wanted to take a look at the state applications that had come in last year, how they scored, and then compare how an application in Monroe would fare. Uh, they came back to us and said that they think it would score well, that it would do well. Uh, and so they are looking at the April first application deadline to the state. Part of that requires, uh, some pretty fast and heavy work on behalf of city administration, working with the county and the, and the lot and the parcel that would be included in this development, as well as some items that city council is gonna have to approve before they can submit that application in April. So, uh, the first would be securing a purchase option on the site, uh, the fire station site and the residential, or the vacant site next to it, where we recently tore down a house, as well as securing the purchase option on the county parking lot. We have had communication with county, uh, and they're preparing to, um, prepare a purchase agreement for the county's consideration later this month in addition to the city's lot. So the purchase option, also having the zoning, uh, satisfied and meeting the zoning requirements is something that they have to exhibit in the application, as well as site plan approval. So while this may be a concept that you see, uh, today, they are gonna have to come back with a site plan for approval, uh, including probably a PUD agreement before the application is sent up on April first. Uh, there is a pilot agreement, a pay in, payment in lieu of taxes that is part of the, the LI-TEC program, where there's, uh, an agreement with the city for a payment in lieu of, uh, uh, taxes. And then also, the developer does have to do a market study, which they are preparing to sign an agreement to execute that and, and get that started on January fifteenth. So, uh, I believe as part of the city manager's update last week, he sent out a timeline of what we're looking at. You'll notice it's a lot of work over the next couple of months, but it's a project that could fare very well downtown, obviously pending, uh, all the approvals from the, the state of Michigan.
So, let's see if there's any questions from the council. Uh, Councilman Michelangelo has a question, we know we'll start there.
I not only have a question, I put a small PowerPoint together, some issues that I wanted to talk about.
Okay.
Because I did it primarily for, kind of instructional too, in terms of how this, we should evaluate this, okay? So I mean, if, if, if Michelle can bring it up, I'll try to make, make my comments limited to about five minutes. And I'll start out by saying I don't have the city's template for PowerPoint, so it's not gonna look as good as the ones that the city put up, so this is a fast and furious presentation. Thanks. All right. For lack of a better, I, I wanted to talk about, is there a, do we, is there a need in the community? Is there a need, first of all, for low-income housing tax credit, housing? Okay, that's what, that's what LI-TEC stands for. Uh, in order for the project to work, it's gotta be built under current construction. And in order to make it work for the developer, what they do is they apply for, uh, tax, tax credits through the federal government. Those are sold on the open market, that's how they derive their equity, that's how they make the project work. However, uh, the, the stipulations are that the, the rental units have to go prime, they have to go for folks that are, that are income qualified. So go to the next slide. The federal government sets up, and I wanna just educate council on this a little bit, maybe the community, that the federal government sets up, uh, parameters for what is, what is, what is income? Low income is, everything is based on the area-wide median income, that's the AMI, and it's adjusted by community. So in the City of Monroe, we have, for example, uh, households that make less than or equal to thirty percent of the AMI are considered low income. We have four hundred and fifty-five owners, one thousand, one hundred and fifteen renters, makes up nineteen percent. The next category is greater than thirty percent but less than fifty percent AMI, there's ten percent of our households. Fifty to eighty percent is, uh, makes up twenty percent. Those three categories define what the federal government refers to as low and moderate income. So right now in the community, we have forty-nine percent of our households are considered low and moderate income. Okay? Uh, sixty-three percent are renter, thirty-seven percent, or excuse me, thirty-seven percent of the households are renter households, sixty-three percent are owner. Could you go to the next slide? The city currently, according to HUD, and I listed the source because I pulled this information off of HUD's website, we have seven hundred and seventy subsidized housing units already in the City of Monroe, and they make up about ten percent of our housing stock. And those includes projects like Woodcraft Square, the former, uh, Village Green, which now has another name, it's the housing project next to Panera Bread. Uh, we have Greenwood, for example. We have the Rossler Street Apartments, plus the Housing Commission has Greenwood, plus the Housing Commission owns single-family homes throughout the community that they lease under the Section Eight program. So ten percent of our housing stock is already subsidized. Ninety-five percent is, is occupied, usually two people per unit according to HUD, and they have a household annual income of twelve thousand dollars. Can you go to the next slide? What I did was, I wanted to find out what the references, uh, to this project are in terms of supportability based on the plans that we've done. Uh, over the last two years, we spent about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a variety of plans, updating the community master plan, downtown master plan, we did a residential target market analysis, and we did the community livability survey, which was community-wide. I went through and I did a word search in each one of the documents for low, low income. And where I found the word low income, I looked to see if it was in relationship to demographics or people or housing. There was never any reference in any of these master plans that called for the City of Monroe to have more low-income housing. Okay? No reference whatsoever. The residential target market analysis did not indicate a further need for more low-income housing in the City of Monroe. Uh, Michelle, can you do another slide, please? This information is from the Census Bureau, uh, and again, or excuse me, this is from Area Vibes, which looks at, uh, livability in relationship to both the city, where we place relative to the state of Michigan, and where we place relative to national government, the nat, the, the nation. Can you hit the next slide? I wanted to show you that our median rent, uh, in the City of Monroe is seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. We're lower than the state of Michigan average of seven hundred, odd eight hundred dollars, and definitely lower than the median rent for the na- nation. rent for the nation, which is pegged at almost $950 bucks. In terms of renter households, we have more renter households as a percentage of our household stock than the state of Michigan, which has 29%, and the federal government, or the nation as a whole, which is 36.5. Okay? So, let's go to the next slide. This is, again, this is the Cost of Living Index. If you notice, the cost of living in the City of Monroe compared to the national benchmark of 100, our cost of living is 88, which means our cost of living in Monroe is 12% less than it is on the national average. It's the same as the state of Michigan. If you go to the next slide, Michelle, you'll notice that in the cost of living, we're the same as the state. But in terms of housing index, the cost of housing in the City of Monroe, we're at 63. The Michigan benchmark is 74. So, we're 11% less our cost of housing than the state of Michigan, and we are 23%, 27% less the national benchmark. So, this information tells me already that we have affordable housing already in the city. We have plenty of affordable housing, with our rents below what the state and national averages are. Hit the next slide. This is a copy out of the residential target market analysis. This is what she is recommending as the distribution of housing units, based on format and size. This is in our recent report that we had prepared six months ago. Could you go to the next slide? This is what they refer to as missing middle. Missing middle is the housing that is between single-family detached in mid-rise apartments. So, missing middle includes duplexes, triplexes, bungalows, townhomes, live-work units, and courtyard apartments. It doesn't include mid-rise apartment units, and it doesn't include single-family. It includes everything in the middle. Could you go to the next slide? This is an example of what middle, missing middle housing is. It's not apartment complexes. It's quads, triplexes, duplexes, and single, and these type of formats, like townhomes and live-work units and lofts. Next slide. A blow-up of the residential target market analysis shows, she's indicating the low-rise or mid-rise between 50-plus units, there is zero number of units needed in the City of Monroe. Large multiplex, which are 20 to 49 units, she's saying, again, less than zero. No market in terms of the residential target market analysis. So, this proposal, where they want to build 50-plus units, 40 to 50 to 60 units, isn't even supported by our own residential target market analysis that we just had completed. Next slide. In the downtown master plan, site number one is the fire department site. Okay? They used, in the downtown master plan, the target market analysis in order to create the building formats for the redevelopment sites they identified. Next slide. This is what they recommended. 18, they recommended a series of new apartments, small, I think up to only 18 apartments, with a series of small townhomes, kind of like what you have. The townhouses like, kind of the format like we have the homes on front, the townhomes on Front Street. Okay? That kind of a format. Can you hit the next slide? This is what they were looking at in terms of the lower right-hand corner, was townhouses and a small apartment building, which would be market rate. Hit the next slide. And this is what the format looked like. And at the bottom, it said they're looking at seven-plus townhomes, and they're looking at around 18 residential apartments, and approximately 57 plus-or-minus parking spaces for this site. And that's in our downtown master plan. So, what I'm suggesting considerations for council on this, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but, you know, we spent a lot of money in the last three years doing master plans, and there is no documented demand, need in any of those documents for additional low-income housing tax credit housing in the City of Monroe. None. Not one reference. The residential target market analysis doesn't indicate any need for the apartment complexes greater than 20 units. The downtown master plan identifies the site for market-rate housing. So, then I have to ask the question, why do we need to incentivize this site with using a pilot, which is payment in lieu of taxes? I mean, strategically, folks, what we have to start thinking about is, we know that in the future, DTE is going to be decommissioned. We have to start replacing our tax base, not with subsidized development, but with development that's going to pay its fair way in taxes. So, I even question the need for, why do we have to still encourage development by giving pilots, payment in lieu of taxes? We have 35% housing stock is already renter. The interesting thing that I found in our community survey, when people were asked about two things, housing options, they said that the housing options in Monroe, we benchmark lower than the national benchmark level. So, people said that there wasn't a lot of housing options in the city, other than single-family or living in an apartment complex. So, there wasn't a lot of options for townhouses, for lofts, for live-work units. The other thing people said in this, in the survey, was that when people were asked about the affordability of housing in the City of Monroe, we compared favorably to the national average. So, people feel that housing in the city is affordable, but there's not a lot of options. So, then I have to ask the question, why are we considering a Lytec project? Why, at this point? We should be following the downtown master plan, which calls for a smaller apartment footprint and calls for townhomes. Because I, the other part, that, the other concern I have, is a project of that size, first of all, I don't even think it can be built on that property, because MISTO is going to require parking. So, you've got 15 units, you're going to have at least 50 to 65 parking spaces. So, from a physical point of view, I don't even know if that site can accommodate it. But the other part of it is, that size of a project in that location, around with those single-family homes, to me, that's almost a disruptive neighborhood change. You're totally changing the character of that neighborhood by going so dramatic with a four-story apartment building on that site. So, these are questions, I think, as a council, we don't need just to, because we have a developer coming in town that says, hey, guys, I want to build a four-story apartment. I need you to give me a pilot. I need a PUD. I need, I need to be incentivized. We have to start really taking a look at the plans that we commissioned, and start really looking and reviewing the plans and implementing the plans. Because I will tell you, one of the comments I get repeatedly from citizens, they don't have a problem with us doing the plans. Their problem is, they say, historically, Monroe does all kinds of plans, but they never implement or follow them. And this was an exercise of, okay, we have a potential project. How does it rate against the plans? Now, these aren't plans that were done 10 years ago. These three plans were all done in the last nine months. How do they rate against the nine plans that we just commissioned, and the project doesn't rate at all, in my opinion? But I wanted to throw it out for council, because I think this is a conversation that we need to have, relative to this type of a project. I'm not against low-income housing, but the bottom line is, is we have affordable hous, we have plenty of affordable housing options in this community, and we've done a pretty good job over the years. We've got 10% of our housing stock that's already federally subsidized. So, these are questions that I wanted to bring up to the council.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Comments, questions? Mr. Pastu?
Well, a lot to consider here. I know we'll have some opportunity to talk a little further about it on Saturday morning, probably, and that may be a better venue for carrying the dialogue, so.
I agree. I guess last thing is, there's any comments from those present this evening? Citizens' comments. Any comments from those present here this evening? Seeing that a motion being ordered.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Whitman to adjourn. Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
Angelie?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Jermaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Thank you all.